Can you lead my trustee Keys?
Let's wish you a good evening. To the flag, the United States of America, to recover, to withstand, on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village Board meeting, February 10th, February 9th, excuse me. Just a reminder, if there's an emergency, we ask that we do it. Park in office, please go to your leave. Please do not leave until sub-directed by a certain service personnel. Also, another invite, it's an outspoken building, so if you must, you must not be here. You can sit outside. And, uh, Bill, talk to me.
Uh, yes, good evening, everybody. I am watching tonight for the board eighty minutes of January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen. Okay, okay, on page two, um, Deputy Mayor Jack Freiger asked Sean Castmore if he had parking space underground, and I believe he said he didn't.
Right.
It says, yes, I did. So that's on page two, like back less than halfway down. Sean Castmore stated, okay. Page three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven paragraphs down, in the middle of the sentence, it should say going, it says gang.
Who is, who's speaking?
Uh, Mayor Pampieri. So what is going to happen is we are gang. And then, on the same page, almost to the bottom, the big paragraph, Village Attorney even stated, the end of the second sentence where it should say pileup, it says pilot.
Right.
And I have one more. I should say, I don't find anything. On the last page, page four, almost, the last trustee comment before public to be heard, trustee curb stated, I want to compliment Joe Keys and Joe Dean for the reflective skirts, it should say skirts. And that's all the corrections.
Thank you.
A motion to accept, the changes. Motion, second.
Second.
On the paper. All right. Okay. Let's close it.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, not much tonight. The bills for the period of February sixth through February ninth, very short period, basically, it was for the month of, uh, no, I guess it was only for a couple of weeks. Six hundred and thirty-six thousand nineteen dollars and thirty-five cents. The five largest bills, the first one was agio construction, that was for South Ocean Airview Pump Station, and that's paid out of sewer money. I think it's out of the, uh, the money we received from people hooking up to the sewer. Three hundred and eighteen thousand four fifty-one oh eight. Scott D. Simone, ten thousand dollars tax sociori. Eastern Resource, nine thousand six eighty-eight ninety-six, landfill charges. Future Holdings Sales Tax Redemptions, eight thousand four ninety-seven fifty-five, and H2M seventy-five hundred dollars and three cents. That's for the vineyards to hook up to our sewer system, and we have money from them on, on, on hand. Total of those, three fifty-four, one thirty-seven sixty-five. Would you have approval?
The motion to accept is presented.
Motion to accept.
Any questions, concerns? On the paper?
Second.
On the paper?
Uh, I do need an approval for the general fund to loan capital projects fund, three twenty-eight, four oh five fifteen. That money will be received either through grants or from a bond.
Motion.
Uh, and, and community development fund, a small amount of thirty-eight oh four thirty, for a total of three thirty-two, two oh nine twenty-five. Would you have approval?
Motion.
Second.
On the paper?
Fine.
All my money does get reimbursed, though. And that's all I have.
No. You need stat?
Uh, yes, I do. We need a filing done, uh, every year, and you said it's gonna do it for us. It's a filing for our bonds, and that is gonna cost us a thousand dollars. If you could have approval to do that.
Motion.
Second.
On the paper?
Fine.
Thank you. Filing done. Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Have to approval?
Yes, um, I have a Patchogue Pride Award here. Is anybody here from Patchogue Family Medical Care, on, uh, room one twelve? Doctor Christine. Hi, Christine, you wanted to come up? I don't know if anybody can see this lovely building, it is right on room one twelve.
Which, that is a little...
Excellent.
Excellent pharmacy.
Many, many years ago.
Doctor Christine, what's your last name?
Dusek.
Dusek.
Really beautiful.
Thank you. Very much. I appreciate it, everybody.
Yeah, very nice.
Here we have, uh... We have two public hearings, we have two public hearings, one coming, I would read that.
Right. Notice of public hearing for the board of trustees, please state notice that the board of trustees in the village of Patchogue, per pursuant to chapter four thirty-five, section sixty-nine of Village Code, shall consider change of zone from the D five district to the D one district for property located at two eighty-four dash two eighty-eight Waverly Avenue, Patchogue, New York, subaccountant tax map number two oh four dash four dash one dash three five point one. Owner of the subject parcel, Stephen Kleisen. Village Code requires that all property owned within a radius of two hundred feet be notified of this proposed request. If you require any further information prior to the scheduled hearing date, please appear in person at fourteen Baker Street, V O Box seven one nine, Patchogue, New York. Any persons interested in the proposed application for a change of zone will be given an opportunity to be heard on February ninth, two thousand and fifteen, at six P M. at Village Hall, Patchogue, New York. And I do have a letter from the planning board, would you like me to read it?
Yes, please do.
Mayor and board of trustees, the planning board met with this applicant to discuss his request for our recommendation to the village board for rezoning the above parcel. The current use of this building is split into two stores. One store is a racing engine rebuilding shop, which has been on the premises for many years, and the second store, which is about thirty-three percent of the total square footage, is an antique store, which is also well established at this location. The applicant has requested to use the engine rebuilding shop area and to convert it into an insurance office. The new use, in the opinion of the board, will not have any significant impact on traffic in the area, as all access to the structure is through a driveway which leads out to Mulberry Street via traffic light to exit onto Waverly Avenue. The new, excuse me, the new use is not retail, and visitors to the building will be limited to insurance clients and staff. Parking for the parcel is sufficient for the proposed use, but will require reconfiguring for handicapped access, lighting, drainage, et cetera, and depending on the revised configuration may require Z E B A approval for limited parking bearings. The insurance office hours are compatible with the surrounding businesses, homes, and adjoining religious institutions, which will not create any hardship in the neighborhood. The planning board recommends that the village board consider granting this request. It should also be noted that there was no comment received from the public on this application. Sincerely, John V. Rocco, Chairman, Petro Village Planning Board.
This piece of property is on the corner of Mulberry and Waverly Avenue. They have been used as, what, engine repair?
Engine building, yeah. The previous that is a motorcycle shop.
Right.
Years ago. Their own, in New Orleans.
And, uh, it's really, it's, it's almost spot-owned there. It's the only D five oh five D one.
That's correct. I think the history of it is why, that, that unusual spot, it's D five, which are least restricted business and reserved for gasoline stations and stuff.
I, I would bet if you look back from nineteen fifty, if you actually go down the area of Avenue, you probably would see a gas station sitting there, I wouldn't be surprised.
Probably.
Or some sort of auto mechanics place. So when the zoning was done, it was basically spot-owned to stay, as it was. So now it's, they're looking to put a, insurance company out?
Insurance company, sure.
So, um, comments by the board?
The applicant's a president.
Yeah. The applicant's here, please?
Yes. Hi, good evening, ma'am.
How are you?
My name is Heather Sander, Detective Mayor of Old Sparker. Um, registered FD, owner. I do have the plans on board, would you mind taking that?
I'm being used. I'll pitch an engineer to figure out how to use it.
All right, here we go. It's a little high, but you got a push-up.
Put it on that. Be right back. Thank you so much. Do, does anybody need my information regarding that company address? Um, as stated, as you already stated, the client, the current potential owner is requesting a change of zone from D five to D one. It is a spot-doned location, all the other parcels surrounded in that particular location is zone D one. Basically, what we're looking to do as well is, we'll also bring that existing retail space into conforming use, in which doing this will also add some benefits to the local community, so we'll have a cleaner establishment, potentially more employment, and we'll have a state farm insurance company available for both the commercial and residential use. The existing footprint of the building and the actual site in itself really don't have any way of changes. I'll show you the site plan in a moment. The only proposed changes that will be incurred is some base lifting to the front, the storefront where the engine shop currently exists. As you can see, I do have extra sets of plans, which is from the test in that as well. But, um, as you can see, we're just doing a change of sign, a little more cleaning up of the front storefront to make it representative of the state farm insurance. The existing retail space, just adjacent to that, will remain the same as well.
An antique shop.
Antique shop, retail, it's a retail space, but you're a property, it's an antique seller. The interior floor...
If you take that one out, if you take it and kind of flip it around so that people can see, maybe we'll just lay it apart?
Oh, yeah, sure. Maybe put a chair.
Put a chair around, maybe.
They're all, yeah. Take these, maybe.
So, as far as the site plan is concerned, based upon the meeting with the planning board, some, uh, some certain items on the plan were addressed, such as the parking. As stated, the existing parking right now, pretty much nonexistent, right now the parking stalls that are being utilized are under the parcel. They aren't marked at the moment. What we did is, we did increase the parking stalls from six to eleven by removing the existing loading dock in the back, that's the proposed, of course. To remove the existing loading dock off the back of the building and additional structures, maintain the refuge along one of the spots where there's a tree inflicted into an area on the back. And as far as the drainage, we did speak with, um, we did speak with the building department as far as the drainage, I know it was initially the custom to refine a drain full, which would require an extensive amount of drainage structure that probably cannot even fit on the site. Um, as far as any of the site work, as you can see, it's minimal, it's just removing the dock, upgrading the pavement, increasing the parking stalls, of course, with the park relaxation. As far as the interior layout is concerned, it's just gonna be an interior renovation within the engine space to conform to and off the shoes, having some walls, partitions, conference room, ADA accessible restroom, and desk.
Questions by the board? Any question, the public? Are you in motion to accept, is presented?
Second.
On the paper?
Fine.
Okay.
I have proof of mail.
If you bring those up.
Thank you. Is Stephen here?
Yes, I am. All right, good evening. Steve Lindsey?
Oh, you?
I'm well, thank you, thank you very much.
What kind of a timeline are you looking at?
Well, um, the next step will be, I guess, going back before the, the planning board, and then, uh, as soon as that is done, I'll be able to close on the building, and start the build-out immediately. So, I've been in the state farm agency for over ten years, my office is located in Bay Corp right now, and, um, it's just a smaller office, it's less than a thousand square feet, and, uh, looking forward to moving to Patchogue, and have a little bigger facility, working with you going forward.
That's wonderful, welcome to town.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
And I know David Kennedy, who's executive director of the chamber, will probably be chasing you out of the room right now.
That's okay, I was, uh, I'm the, 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 I'm
Now here's the more complicated one. And this is Sweetsie Real Estate Development, basically the what is now the Bryant Building, but when it was rebuilt, it was Sweetsie Department Store. When that was initially assessed, it was assessed by the village for $1,214,168, reflecting an equalized rate, an equalized value of $13,168,850 on land, rebuilding based upon a cost approach to the value. The property was exempt from taxes or otherwise subject to added loan levies to fund the business district, the BID, and the village sewer district. The owner began to agree to taxes. Because the town of Pocahontas had agreed to a relatively low assessment in its pilot, the owner never seriously pursued the reduction of town, of the town assessment. Also, the owner didn't push the village grievance via dependency of the village pilot. As the pilot agreement grew to a close, was closed at the end of its 10-year term in 2011, the owner party began corresponding with the undersigned, asking the village to reconsider the village's assessment. Due to the shifts of the village's equalization rates from 2001 to 2006, and the 2000s taxable increase, the total equalized value of the subject had ballooned to $28 million by 2011. Now you gotta remember, there was a pilot on the property taxes, but that pilot never reflected itself into the sewer taxes or the BID taxes. After negotiations with the petition's council, the village's assessment was reduced to $478,028 or an equalized value of $9,896 effective 2013-14 village tax rule, the first year the property entirely returned to the tax rules. So on the village taxes, there will not be a decrease in what we receive, in fact, there'll be an increase in what we receive because it's coming back to full value. However, the parties could not agree on the amount of refunds to cover the owner's claim of owing payment on the bid and added loan levies. In 2013, the petition owner rejected the village's settlement of $100,000 and capital demands of $342,000 in refunds based upon the current village assessment copies. Council for the owner recently settled for $280,000. So basically, what had happened is because there was never a readjustment on the sewer taxes and the BID taxes, those taxes went at that, goes to $28 million range. So basically, at this point, it is not on the court calendar. The petition has not yet obtained an appraisal. We have, you know, it is a concern that if we do end up in court, it'll be closer to $400,000. The $500,000 could be quite a bit.
It would be significant.
Yes, significant as in numbers. So I am making a motion for the board to accept the settlement as negotiated without return and the assessor Carol Sweetsie and council for the West Assessor Jasper Slesker out of Green City in Omaha, that we settle for $280,000, which can be paid out of sewer funds.
Well, we actually
Was it $325, right?
Two twenty.
Two twenty-five, I'm sorry. That we pay then the $225,000.
Which is the aggregate amount for the full disputed tax years?
Yep.
Which is '01 through '12, so that's 10 years of tax refunds.
Right.
So it's really like $22,000. About $22,000 a year, which is significant when you look at the adjusted amount with originally $28 million if it continued, was reduced to $9.8 million. It's significant over assessment.
So the motion to pay the $225,000, which is the aggregate number between the BID and the sewer taxes, which is sewer taxes is obviously the greatest amount of that number, that will be paid for out of sewer surplus and does not affect the resident taxpayer within the village. Only, and it will, like I said, will be coming out of sewer surplus. But it's a tough one to say to make a motion to pay $225,000.
So it's not going to affect the village taxes going forward? Real estate taxes?
Real estate taxes. But the real estate taxes will go up again.
And so they were overcharged and bid in sewer for 10 years.
Right.
Is it going to affect the bid tax and the sewer tax?
No, we're working with the bid right now and making sure that doesn't. Okay, motion to accept, is that it?
Motion.
Set.
Set.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay. Mr. Smith, you got a check? Mr. Smith, you got a check for me?
It's in my office. I'll make sure he asks before the evening is over.
Right. It's in the mail, right?
We're gonna have to drop it for us though, see. Mr. Mayor, trustees, Mr. Seal, Charlie Egan, Treasure Cross Act, ladies and gentlemen, Dennis Smith with the Business Improvement District. And frequently when I start this report, I start with the New York Main Street grant, which we basically have finished up. But what I'm going to do this evening is I want to summarize what we did with the 2012 New York Main Street grant. The last two projects, which was 46 East Main and 1 East Main, were completed close to a month ago. They've been set away for reimbursement. Those are the only two reimbursements that we have out there. 46 East Main should be back any day now. Probably two weeks away for 1 East Main to come back. With that grant though, the 2012 grant that was awarded December of 2012, it was a $250,000 total grant and $237,500 of that was earmarked for improvements, project improvements on buildings, storefronts, retail establishments, and street skate projects. There was $12,500 that was relegated to administrative costs. With that project, we spent $235,438 out of the available $237,500, and that's including the street skate. And we got a return on that of total improvements that are valued at $685,201. So again, we did very, very well with leveraging what was the seed money in that particular grant. And we actually spent 99.1% of the available monies that we had earmarked for improvements. With that, we improved nine buildings containing 11 retail units. And we did the one street skate project with the two garden areas and the benches. That's 1 East Main Street. So again, a lot of bang for the buck and a lot of visual, a lot of things that you can see that are perhaps a little bit better now than what they were when we started. And that's not only outside with the size, but we did at least 1, 2, 3, 4 interior renovations of existing retail establishments. So worked out well. What I did also with that is this was the third grant we have, we have gotten. We've gotten one in 2008 for $200,000. We grew that to $1,65,000 in improvements. And that was structured differently. The match was different. The match is much more generous now, which is why, you know, conventional wisdom is saying, well, if you had a $200,000 grant, why couldn't you grow to $250,000 to at least that? But the matching requirement is different. So it's, you really can't accomplish the same things that you could have back then. Plus, we had two major projects with that particular grant. Four Corners, the Budgea Buy-A-Sell Building, and the Bridgehamper slash Roast Coffee establishment. That was done with that first grant. But that $200,000, $1,65,000, 2010, we were awarded a $500,000 grant, which grew to $921,600 improvements. And of course, this grant, as was just mentioned, $250,000 that grew to $600,000, well, if you put the addendum back in, it would be $694,500. Out of the $950,000 grants that we've received over the last six years, we've grown them into more than $2.6 million in improvements. Street skate building, retail stores, et cetera. $2.6 million in improvements throughout the village. So that was really quite a run with those three grants. I was very proud of that.
You really should be because any of us sitting in a room here to take $950,000 in turn in six years into $2.6 million. That's it. I don't think it kind of gets much better than that. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, thank you for the kind words. It may improve this where we needed to make a lot of cases, like the Four Corners, like the Gem Ball Building on South Ocean. West Main Street across from Ryecord, we did some improvements down there. So we really targeted areas that needed it and we did get the bankroll buck, which you can see. Unfortunately, and there's always an unfortunately, we did submit what would have been our fourth application for a fourth New York Main Street grant last June. The award list came out in December, unfortunately, we went out on that one. That was for North Ocean Avenue, the Business District, North Ocean Avenue up to Thorndale minus the new village development. So we didn't get that one, but I am sure there'll be something out there in June and we'll be taking a look at that again and see what we can, where we can do it. I won't be talking about this at the next meeting, but hopefully before the year is out, we'll be talking about it again. The other things that I'd like to talk about, cameras, security cameras. We had the wiring in the theater. And I've been speaking about this for far too long, at least months and months, six months, probably. We went to the theater beginning of this month, we wired the theater. Camera for the back, camera for the marquee, PTZ, be able to see up and down East Main Street. We'll see the pretty much 75% of the Old Street parking lot. Unfortunately, when we came, when it came time to hook them up, we looked at the connectivity within the theater and the theater didn't seem to think that they could support the new cameras without possibly running a risk to what they do day in, day out. We tested their broadband, it wasn't a little bit weak. We looked for ways to boost it. We went back and forth. I mean, you know, we didn't want to be the person to make the theater in the dark by putting cameras in it. So we looked for another way to get around that. The village has graciously decided to put another cable connection, more service into that building. That is scheduled to happen tomorrow morning at somewhere between 8:00 and 10:00 o'clock in the morning. So once that happens, the camera company is on call to come in the next day, if not the day later. And the only thing that will work, as it has in the past, is weather. If there's weather where the cable vision people come out, fire, put the camera in. The next day, we should have the camera people out there. By the end of the week, hopefully, we will be connected there. We will learn how to use that system. We will make our way to the Four Corners, take the existing camera that the new village said we could take. We will put one of our PTZs there remotely and we'll take that camera from the Four Corners now and install it on Reese's 1900, looking down Main Street. We've gotten permission from Matt to do that. So that's on the agenda as soon as we get the theater out of the way this week. And then we're on our way. The last camera that we really need to look, I know the village wants to have a fourth camera in the Church Street parking lot. We still have to find a suitable location for that. That will be high enough and far enough out to pretty much encompass the whole parking lot without any blind spots and, you know, anything that we would want to see that we wouldn't be able to see. So hey, finally, we're on our way and I'll be able to talk about cameras work the next time I come up there. The last thing I wanted to discuss tonight was something that we had first spoken about, I guess it was good eight, 10 months ago. And that was a parking guide. Once we got all the metering done on Main Street and we got the metering done in the lots, meaning the, a lot of spaces that we wanted to meter, we spoke about creating a guide that would tell people about our parking lots. Where are the meters? Where are paid parking? What time does it start? Main Street's always paid parking. How do you use the meters themselves? So what we have done is I've gotten together in the last week or so with Deputy Mayor Krieger and Roy Monty, who originally created the tablet. And we have another meeting tomorrow. We're going to try to finalize a plan to come up with a trifold like this that will include the map in the middle and then some footage on the outside that will explain how the meter works and different things that the patrons should know about the village. And once we do that and we get the approved copy, we're gonna ask, I'm gonna ask the BID board tomorrow for funding to print a couple of thousand of these. And then we'll have them to hand out retail establishments, restaurants, village hall. We can hand them right out here at District Court when people are coming in with parking tickets. This is how not to get a parking ticket. And it's all the electronics so we can, you know, put it on all the websites that serve the village. The Chamber of the Bid Village website. And, you know, how to make it as a tutorial for a little park, how to park and what needs to be done. Unless there's any questions for me, that's all I have.
Yes, thank you very much. What you were able to do with the Main Street grants, really amazing.
Thank you.
At least you got, the second is what you did on the source. I think they looked there and answered, okay, you had your mouth full, now it's too many else.
Vifements of our own success.
The money has stayed someplace.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I just do want to take the time to thank the mayor and the village for working with the chamber. You know, certainly in the last month or so, there's been, you know, a state is a recent late night incident on Main Street. And I know, you know, the village is working on strategies to combat it. I know the restaurant committee is doing a better job communicating amongst themselves with the security there and hopefully handle this. But certainly the security cameras have been a huge boon because certainly that's what's really helping the police capture or surely identify who the people are. We did get the recent one for the pictures that were taken for the recent incident, City Swag. We passed it around, so, you know, we'll just keep being diligent with it, but I do appreciate how responsive the village has been to our concerns. Next, I do want to, you know, start highlighting some of the things that are upcoming in the next month with the chamber. The first thing I want to highlight is we're very proud to be introducing our first restaurant coupon. And this, actually, the genesis of how this came about really started here at the village's board meeting when Reverend Walter appeared at the end of last year to talk about coming up with some concepts to help the needy in our community and to do more for the business community. He did approach the chamber with that message as well. And from that, working with the restaurant committee, this is something that hopefully we're going to do more of. But initially, the restaurant coupon is now available for purchase on the chamber website. It's a $10 coupon that gives you a $20 value. But for it to be redeemed, it does have that you do spend at least 40 at the establishment that you're going to. It can be purchased off the chamber website. The coupon is good just from the week of February the 22nd to the 26th. Now, we're really trying to see how popular this is and how this works. So it's going to be from the 22nd to 26th. There's about a dozen restaurants that are participating and that list does continue to grow as the word hits out. All that information is on the chamber website. So I encourage everybody to do that. 50% of the proceeds raised will go directly to, you know, working with Reverend Walter to the soup kitchens to help support the endeavors that they're doing. So it's a great opportunity, it's a great discount, a great way to try out some of the new restaurants in town that maybe you haven't got a chance to go to as well as spent, you know, giving some money to help us help the needy in the community. Of course, now, even though it's February, St. Patrick's Day is right around the corner. It always is for us Irish. But we are gearing up for our St. Patrick's celebrations. As everybody knows, Peter and Amber Reese Sarich are grand marshals this year. We're going to be formally introducing them at our passing of the Sash ceremony, which will take place on Sunday, February 22nd, 1:00 p.m. at the Brick House. Of course, there'll be great Irish music and food and good drink specials. And of course, our annual Irish Soda Break Contest will be taking place as well. So everybody's invited, it's always a lot of fun. And of course, following that up, the parade will be the following month, Sunday, March 22nd. Beginning with the 5K, "May the Road Rise to Meet Ye," 5K. It'll start at 10:55 and the parade immediately follows after that on that Sunday. This month, we do have a nice number of grand opening ceremonies, ribbon cutting ceremonies that everybody, we invite everybody to please join us, particularly our village board. First, we have one coming up this Friday, February 13th. It's a new business, it's an online clothing business called Fallow Clothing. One of the partners in that business happens to be the manager of the Brick House, James Skidmore. So he'll be doing, we'll be doing a little ribbon cutting ceremony to welcome that business to the chamber this Friday at the Brick House from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I invite everybody to join us then. Then following, the following Friday, we'll be celebrating the new location of John Michelle Hair Designs. They are going to be doing a little ribbon cutting ceremony for their new location Friday, February 20th from 4:00 to 6:00. There'll be light refreshments. Again, everybody, please come on down. And then the following Thursday, February 26th, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting to welcome Edward Jones to the community. They just opened up in a space in the Conference Associates Building over there. They've actually been, Joe Bennett, who is the representative of that branch, has been a member of the chamber for a few years now. She was actually based in an office in Northport, but, you know, loves patchwork so much, she just wanted to get the office down here. So we welcome her to the community and we'll do that on Thursday, February 26th. And of course, I want to highlight, so it's the following month, very excited to do a nice ribbon cutting ceremony on Saturday, March 21st to congratulate Blums on their beautiful renovations and they worked it into their store too. So, you know, keep that on your calendar, that should be. Some other upcoming events we got with the chamber. This Wednesday, we're going to do our next networking event, we're calling it Coffee Talk. And of course, it is going to be held at Roast Coffee, early 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. People coming down can participate with a 20, they'll get a 20% discount on their purchases. And it'll be a nice networking event to get and know each other in the chamber, newer members and older members. So, and of course, we always invite our elected officials to please join us there as well. And that will be followed up at the end of the month with our normal general membership meeting, which will be Tuesday, February 24th. It's a lunch meeting at 1:00 p.m. It'll be at Restigio's Restaurant up in North Patch, right on 112. Our guest speakers will include Nick Foley, our new town councilman, and we have a presentation from PRMG on some marketing and public relations tips. And the last thing I do want to highlight, the chamber is working with Art Space and the Organization of Colors. They're going to be hosting an African-American history, you know, this is Black History Month, and they'll be doing an art exhibit and music to celebrate that called Embrace. And that will be Saturday, February 21st, 6:00 p.m. at the Art Space Gallery. So that's everything I got coming up in the month. Certainly, if anybody has any questions, I'll certainly answer them. I know we do have a few things on the agenda dealing with event dates and some approvals, I guess I'll wait for the appropriate time for that to come up, but I'll be here to answer any questions that might be coming up about that. Thank you very much.
Should we?
Yes, tomorrow at noon at the New Hot Brown Muinchen. We're going to have our 2-2-2 meeting with the bid, the chamber, and the village. And we're putting this together and really want the focus to be a discussion about what we're calling this year being the year of the retail, how we can both encourage our retail that are here to stay as well as what we can do to maybe bring in some incentives or bring some new retail in town, support the restaurant base that we have. We really want to jazz up the retail base as well.
You see that article, Dance Papers?
You mentioned it, I haven't got a chance to see it. Please bring that tomorrow because I'm interested in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor, it's fun with the flute. That's the only thing I know about a theater report is they have three ladies and a guitar, or three guitars and a lady, was it?
Sold out.
Girls with guitars.
Girls, okay, sorry. A bunch of girls had a bunch of guitars.
Sold out.
They sold out. I heard it was a great show also. Dave, that is a good report.
Very succinct, John.
He's going to settle with more than, what's he saying?
Mr. Mayor, for the board members, ladies and gentlemen, just a couple of things, and that would be very brief actually. I'm requesting approval to install a three-way stop sign at the intersection of Cedar Avenue and Campbell Street. I'd like to read into the record just a few sentences from a letter that I received from a resident down there from Samantha Bigliata from 169 Cedar Avenue. My husband and I have lived at 169 Cedar Avenue for more than two years and regularly walk our neighborhood with my young daughter and dog. On these walks, I was shocked at the speed at which most drivers drive on Cedar Avenue. Stops on the intersection of Campbell and Cedar Avenue will slow traffic and remind drivers that they are in a residential neighborhood. I recently read the article in Newsday entitled "Making Village More Family Friendly." I support this strategic vision and I believe making our roadways safer is one way to make our great village more family friendly. Thank you in advance for your attention to this matter with gratitude, Samantha Bigliata. So that's a motion, Mr. Mayor, to install the three-way stop sign at the intersection of Campbell and Cedar Avenue.
Cut it, bud, board. Ms. Bigliata, are you here?
No, she didn't make it.
Well, as someone who lives on Cedar Avenue, I can attest to the speed and I believe that corner is a Bay Avenue school bus stop as well because they see the children standing in their cell homes. It can't hurt.
And one of the things is also is that, just an aside to it, as part of this parks plan that we're putting in place is sidewalks, that bullet in Cedar, is to get people, because they come off the ferry and they get right down the road. And I know in front of Mrs. Bigliata's house, they don't have sidewalks in their afterworld also. Any other comments by the board?
I'll make a little comment about traffic. Over the last, last couple of trustee meetings, we've had residents here, Jetting Avenue and so on, making comments about our traffic speeding reckless driving, people driving through stop signs. And I guess in the last week or two, we got two letters from residents. And I myself have been passed on West Avenue going 25 miles an hour. And three days ago, somebody passed me while I was driving down the street in front of Bravo. You know, just a guy just blasted by me. There's not much that we can do about it. We can put in stop signs. We can, if we have the privilege of redoing our road, we can do calming. You know, we can make things narrow down, slow traffic down. But there's, there's nothing that the village of Patchard can do about idiots running through stop signs or driving 40 miles an hour or 50 miles an hour on West Avenue. This is the responsibility of Suffolk County Police. And by the way, I wish I had a badge and a paintball gun because I would shoot a lot of people. But I'd go to jail if I did that, so. But my point, I just want to emphasize for the residents that we're with you. There's really nothing that we can do about it. I mean, I wish the, we can't, we're not going to get a cop on every corner, you know, it's just not going to happen. Putting a stop sign in, those of us who are law-abiding will stop and the idiots will drive right through it.
And you're late for the ferry and you drive right through it.
I mean, it's really
Yeah, Joe had made the point to me also is that, at one point, what a stop sign does is even if they go through, they hesitate, they slow down.
Yeah, it slows them down.
At some point coming up to it, they're looking to see whether somebody else, at least they're somewhat aware of what might be going on around them. So I think that, you know, to that point.
I mean, we do have, you know, we can make some one-way streets, we can put stop signs in. If, there are some traffic calming techniques, you know, to make these bump outs at the intersections, so.
It's a road diet, you put a road diet, by the way, it's naveling.
Right, you go through fashion, you hit the guy coming the other way, so you slow down.
But over time, people get used to the stop signs and they're going to roll through it. I mean, if you drive the same street over and over, if the village residents are on the streets, they're going to give you a stop sign that they
Joe, I'm for the stop sign, absolutely. I mean, I think stop signs are, hey, we're in a 25 mile, 15 mile an hour village, you know. Putting brakes on for a minute is not going to hurt you. But we got it, we got a lot of really, really aggressive bad drivers along that.
Yeah, along that, not just in Patchard.
Well, Boston was crazy too when I lived there, but maybe it's where I go, so.
As you would, you're a smart car person.
I'll tell you, you know, I got passed on in the smart car on West Avenue. I mean, I'm going 25, 30 miles an hour, doing the speed. But I got passed, the other day I was with Karen, I was right in front of Bravo and I just pulled out a left turn to south on Ocean Avenue. This idiot just flies by me, I mean, he's got an SUV. Karen said maybe he's a cop.
Public sale, is you?
He had a funny antenna on the back of his car, so.
Any other comment for the board? Motion to accept, is that it?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
Thank you. I'm requesting approval to rescind Resolution Number 92-D, 2014, hiring Park Line to provide sign in the amount of $28,500. We opted instead to make those signs for the parking lots in-house, save the village probably about $22,000 by the end of the year. The sign shop is paying off.
Motion, say.
Second, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Requesting approval to go out the bid for the River Avenue Sewer Extension Project. I don't know what that's about.
For those that don't, we're gonna be searing the south end of River Avenue, Sunset, Maple Price. Also doing road raising and new storm work. We have a million dollar grant from the Dormitory Authority. Two separate grants, but they both went to Dormitory Authority for a million dollars. $578,000 from the county for their sewer fund, and we put in about $800,000 for our own sewer surplus. When I talk about surplus, I talk about sewer. It is not dollars that come from the resident taxpayer. It comes from money's put together in the sewer fund. And some of that money, just for background, comes from what we call key money charges. When you see the development down on South Ocean Avenue, they, village, they pay When you see the development down in South Ocean Avenue, they, Village, they pay probably about $180,000 in key money. 163 units over here, there's probably $500,000 worth of key money charged. The monies that come in to the sewers are used for the sewer districts and for sewer connections. So, we talk about going out to bid, we talk about bonding, and we talk about payments, we talk about surpluses, but it has to do with sewers. It comes out of that, but it does not come out of the resident taxpayer. So, this will be a part of about 2.3 million, we suspect, 2.3 and 2.4. And it is totally borne by the sewer district. But in this case, it will not even raise the taxes in the sewer taxes, because we've put together the financing, the funding necessary to keep it away from any tax increases at all. So, it'll be a million dollar project, and we figure out how to do it for nothing, one might say, but, so.
And a long time coming for those people down at that end of town.
Yeah. If you live down there or you go down there, you know, just an aside, I think Joe, maybe you were the one that told me that you knocked on the door and the one that said one of the ranches doesn't let the kids go out, because it just starts percolating.
They don't get washed, they don't take showers for a couple of days on this sometimes. It'd be a pretty brutal situation. This is a great relief for them, glad to see it happen.
Okay.
That's a motion.
Here, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I was hearing this as I came in, so I'm assuming that I'm requesting approval for Suffolk Center, Rehabilitation and Healthcare to hook up with our sewer system.
Well, we're giving them a conceptual approval and go to H2M to prepare a model plan.
Oh, so requesting, I give them approval to contact H2M, a conceptual approval, correct?
Okay, this, this is a nursing home that's on, it's at a village and a district, did the East Patchogue Sewer Connection. It's on Jumpville Boulevard, down by the CBS, outside the village on the east end of town. And they're right on Lake, going to have a failing sewer, so they're going to look into us, maybe upstate Lake.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
It's all right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Trustee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I thought I had a building and housing report, but I don't see it yet, so I'll be brief, I just have one, you can make it up here. I would like to make a motion to request approval to reimburse Michael Riccio $200 for a fire code cost payment that he made with his own funds. So, it's a motion to reimburse.
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just so you know, Mike Riccio is a fire inspector. We have about 750 commercial properties. We inspect every single year, the better part of 500 of those. And he does, he does every single one. And, so you may not get it in one year, but you're going to get it in a year and a half. Everybody gets it, at least every year to a year and a half, he does his inspections on all commercial properties within the village. And so, if you figure that, I think it's $50 for inspection, the one that makes is $200 back.
He's a concert professional.
Very, very good. And he makes his good every day. There's a motion for, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Trustee, further.
Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, first, a quick note on the CBA. The CBA is developing a plan, I hesitate to call it a pocket park, but to develop a pocket park across the street from Ryder Avenue and Finis Fitness. You know, that's a sort of an eyesore parking lot that we have down there. So, we're commissioning a design, so someday in the not-too-distant future, we should have some pictures to share with the public about the conceptualization of what it's going to look like. We've got to figure out how we can pay for it later, but we've got the money to do the design. So, the idea is to put some kind of a green barrier that looks good between the street and the parking lot. We've looked, we've had ground cores done and things like that so far, and we got an updated plot plan for the parking lot. It's a really big lot, it's surprising how big it is. And we, one of the things that we discovered getting the design is that it's really underutilized. The lane, you know, it's poorly marked, but the lanes are like 40 feet wide.
Yeah, it's very poorly.
You know, you don't need 40-foot wide lanes, so we'll probably be able to put that park in there and not decrease the number of parking spaces at all, so. The other thing that I have on my agenda tonight is the Greater Patchogue Chamber of Commerce calendar for 2015, and it's quite a few items. Should I just read the individual items and seek approval?
Yep.
If anybody objects, I guess they should wait till the end, or they can tell me to stop, or whatever.
She's up.
Okay, the first event is Alive After Five Music Festival and Street Fair. The dates are, proposed dates are, Thursday, July 19th.
9th.
9th, I'm sorry, 19th or something.
July 23rd, Thursday, August 6th, Thursday, August 20th, with a rain date of Thursday,
August 27th. The event will be from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30. Streets will be closed from 4:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Second item, Carnival Nights and Family Fun Night. Carnival Days, I'm sorry, Carnival Days and Family Fun Nights. I used to be able to read. Thursday, July 9th, Saturday, July 11th for Carnival Days, Family Fun Night, Friday, July 10th. 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., with streets closed from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Friday only, from Ocean Avenue to Maple Avenue. Then we have Patchogue Days Sidewalk Sales. Thursday, August 6th, Saturday, August 8th, no street closures except for Alive After Five on Thursday, 6th.
It's Thursday, Tuesday, Saturday?
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, I'm sorry, thank you, Joe. The Saint Liberata Italian Festival, Saturday, December 26th, with a rain date of Saturday, October 3rd, 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., street closed 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., bocce included. The Patchogue Fall Festival, Saturday, October 17th, with a rain date of Saturday, October 24th, 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., street closed from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And there's Halloween Happenings, Saturday, October 31st, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., no street closures. And then last but not least is Midnight on Main Street, New Year's Eve, Thursday, December 31st, from 8:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., street closed from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. That's it.
Actually, it's on 9:02.
9:02, yeah. That's a motion.
Motion to accept it, present.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Just so you know, the Chamber of Commerce, the BID, and members of the staff here have been working to put together a full calendar that you'll be able to access online, that will have all of these dates, plus dates, I think, you know, with Maria, as we're putting this up, for all of the big parts of recreation, what's going to be happening in the parks, the concert series, so that will hopefully, David, do we have a date of that, the completion of that for?
Um, I mean, you know, we got pulled back, a couple meetings got missed because of the weather, but I would think, you know, by the end of this month, for sure, we'll have a star ball.
So, you'll be able, you'll be able to go online, take a look, see what's there, and, David, there.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll put it on all the different sites too, you can see the Chamber of the Village, today, all of them.
Thank you.
One quick comment I wanted to make. Sunday, I had the occasion to drive to Iceland, so I went through the middle of Seil, and the mountains of snow along the sidewalks in Seil, to be contrasted with our, I mean, it looks like spring on Main Street, maybe not South Ocean Avenue, not everywhere, but our guys, Joe Dean and company, did absolutely amazing job leading up the building, so I think.
Thank you.
And that guys did, I think, they put 40 hours of overtime in that first week for man, tremendous amount of overtime, very, very difficult storm to handle. Trustee, Devon.
Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of things, and just wanted to let everybody know that the last planning board meeting, the approval was granted to Toast, which as some of you may know from Fort Jefferson, breakfast and lunch. And they'll be going into a portion of the building that used to house, remember yesteryears? They'll be in the back of the building, so they'll be able to access from the front, but they're creating a hallway. So, then the remainder of the front will be open for another tenant, and then he'll have the back area with the side door off the road walkway, he said he likes to be discovered off the alley. And then hopefully, he can work things out with the library, because his landlord owns half of the little courtyard in the back, that in the summertime, they would put, you know, just a couple of tables out there. So, it sounds like a great plan. I think he'll be a good addition to the village. He's only going to be open until 3:00 p.m., he's not going to be open in the evening. On another topic, I have two resignations, seeking approval to accept the resignation of Tracy Calder Castbury from the Architecture Review Board with regrets.
Motion to accept. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And then also seeking approval to accept the resignation from the Architecture Review Board of Mary Castner with regrets.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, we will be looking for new additions to the Architecture Review Board. Well, we're on the subject of calendars. The Patchogue Arts Council, in partnership with Patchogue Theater and the BID, has set the following dates, October 3rd to 11th for 2015 Hack Matt Festival. The grant application went into the mail on Friday, so fingers crossed that we'll get that destination downtown grant again. But if not, we'll be moving forward anyway, because we have tremendous community support for us coming around, and I'm sure we can make it happen. This year's theme is pairings, and it will be pairing different art forms together, contrasting art forms, similar art forms, all kinds of crazy ideas courtesy of our visual arts coordinator, John Sino. So, we're looking forward to that. And if you're looking to catch a film this week, the Plaza Media, Cinema Media Arts Center is showing Wild, and also showing Fox Catcher. So, I hear both films are very good. My mother saw Fox Catcher last night, she said it was excellent. So, that comes, you know, very highly recommended. And Patchogue Arts Council Gallery has a really beautiful show up called Beyond Paintings, so when you're over by the Art Space Building, check it out. And then David already mentioned what the Tracy Todd Hunter's group is doing, that's on February 21st. I'll send you all an email, because I'm unable to attend, I won't be in town on February 21st.
I'll be in Cancun.
Actually, I think I'll fly back that night, actually, so, but I'll get into it. So, it would be nice to have some trustee or mayor presence at Tracy's event, it's always a great event.
Did the 11th of 26th?
No, I think it's the 21st.
21st.
Saturday, 21st.
That's right.
Okay. Well, maybe one of you gentlemen will be there. I think Jack is going.
Yeah, Jack.
Yeah, I think Jack's been on, along with a few other people. So, that's all I have for this evening, Jackie.
But I think, you know, one of the points that.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, they have just, you want to make a couple of comments to, for that. I have one other topic.
Just before, just, as you mentioned, three things, three things I mentioned the last couple minutes, Alive After Five, Art Space, and what was it, oh, Patchogue, well, Patchogue Theater, all three of them with all the best on the line.
Isn't that amazing? It's really great.
So, just kind of, kind of.
That's nice.
Since it's where we come as a community.
I did have one more thing on my agenda, I've gotten some inquiries, as some of you are aware, people are interested to have some, some more information about our code as it relates to food-oriented franchise businesses, so I wanted to ask Attorney Eden to please give us some details that we probably reapproved about two years ago, three years ago.
Yes. This is not proposed for change, by the way, tonight, this is just for clarification purposes. The Board in 2010 adopted prohibition on formula and/or franchise food establishments. And the legislative intent is important, and I only want to take a certain section from this, and, you know, this Board doesn't normally adopt legislative intents as part of the code, but just the concept was important, this is one of the exceptions in when we did it. Legislative intent and findings, anybody found and established that the Village of Patchogue has a strong interest in creating and maintaining desirable living, working, and business environment for all visitors and residents of the village. It is further found that the addition of formula and/or franchise food establishments, if not monitored and regulated, will frustrate the village's goal of achieving a unique and diverse retail business and food establishment base comprised of a mix of businesses, both local and national in nature, that the unregulated establishment of formula or franchise food establishments will unduly limit or eliminate business establishment opportunities for local and smaller or medium-sized businesses. With that said, the Board adopted a prohibition of any formula or franchise food establishments in the D2 and D3 business district. The village code, as the Board is aware, is like a funnel, and the widest permission in the villages is D1, and then it comes down to anything permitted in D1 except for this, which is D2. And anything permitted in D3 is everything in D2 except for this, so it gets smaller. So, it's in the D2 section, but the prohibition also flows to the D3 business district, which is our most restricted district, our business core. So, in D2 and D3, franchise formula food restaurants are prohibited absent a special use permit from the Board of Trustees. And the definition of a formula or franchise food establishment is important. A food establishment required by contract or other arrangement to maintain any of the following: standardized array of services and/or merchandise, trademark, logo, service mark, symbol, decor, architecture, layout, uniform, menus, ingredients, food preparation, or similar standardized features. So, when you think of that, think of McDonald's, think of Subway, think of those kind of businesses. So, that's the, that's the precedent of the law, there is no proposal to change that before the Board, there's been discussion about it based upon natural interest in the village economy, but as of now, that is the law, the village of Patchogue.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Trustee, Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, guests. The Parks Recreation Report, we had two winners for the annual snowman contest, or not the annual, the, or storm, which with pictures is on the Recreation Facebook page. I don't have the winners with me right now. One of them was pretty funny, it was called a deflated snowman, and it was carrying on with the Boston football theme, it was pretty funny. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval for Patchogue Medford School District to use rider out of the complex for the baseball softball program, Monday through Friday from March 30th to June 6th, 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. I'd like to add that the value of this use by the school system is $6,750, so I don't know what we're doing with shared services lately, but.
That's what we do to pay out in the school, we use.
Right.
Some of their facilities and, kind of, David.
We're doing our part to help the sports program and the school system.
Absolutely.
That's a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Let's request approval for the Patchogue Lions, Lion Club, to host the 12th Annual Walk for a Guided Dog on Sunday, May 17th, from 9:00 to 10:30. Motion.
Now, where is that located?
Present. That's uptown.
Ken's, my house, right there.
Right.
On the sidewalk, is it?
Yeah, for those of you that didn't hear, the seal, it's based on Jem's, the firehouse, where it starts and finishes, and goes around the north end in town.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval for the Patchogue for Act One Entertainment to have live amplified music at Firehouse Park on Sunday, June 14th, from 11:00 to 9:00. This is Carl Reamer, who's done an excellent job in the past, shuts everything down at 9:00. He's asking us for some recyclable cans, which we're going to provide for him, and this is how, like, the way, he does a nice job.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval for the Lusaral, the American Foundation, to hold their annual cultural event in the municipal lot, Jason and Bravo Market, on Sunday, August 23rd, from 10:00 to 6:00. I've been trying to get in touch with Angel. nine, he's asking us for some recyclable cans, which we're gonna provide for him, and, uh, this is how, like, the whip does a nice job.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request approval for Lucille, the American Foundation, to hold their annual cultural event in Municipal Lab, Jason Bravo Market, on Sunday, August twenty-third, from ten to six. I've, uh, been trying to get in touch with Angel, see if there's any road closing, last year, they closed the can.
Yeah, the can closes.
Right.
Yeah.
I haven't heard from back from him.
Okay, we'll get back tomorrow, 'cause, 'cause I think Marcy now is, is actually taking over in town a lot, since I might have his number.
We had some conditions on this last year.
So let's approve the date, like we did last year.
Okay. But, but pending agreement on conditions.
Right.
Second.
Sorry.
His name is Marcy Alphaloff.
Okay.
He's one of the guys that came down.
Hi.
He played with that.
Oh, yeah, he played.
Yeah.
Hi.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have with us tonight, uh, this Wendy, and Sal, and Salara, from the Suffolk County Coalition Against Domestic Violence, uh, who has requested a change of location for the pet breeding from Main Street to Shorefront Park. Uh, Mr. and Ms. Justizia and myself met with them, uh, sold them on the idea, and I think it's a great location.
What, now, how do you need the park, please?
Um, Wendy, would you like to step?
Um.
Wendy.
Um, we were, thank you, we were thinking to use Shorefront Park, um, that actually come up the first year that we were planning.
Yeah.
Um, and we think it's just, it's more, it's more pet-friendly, it's, it's better for the dogs to be in a park setting instead of a parking lot, um, so we were thinking to use that track that.
Oh, okay.
We pointed out, um, you know, we'll have different activities for the pets, and, you know, some vendors, and some music, um, and just go from nine to one, if that's okay.
Sure.
Um, but no road closure.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh.
Just change the venue, you approved it.
Change the location.
Right.
Motion to use a park.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And, uh.
You'll have to pay for it to get it something else.
It's good to be pet-friendly.
You have to clean up after those dogs.
Um, it's good, but you can't use it for your dog, would you?
And you can't put it in a little tree.
No, it's not a phone call. They have a company, but, told to be her. Locked.
This is for Joe. You know, I answered about that little mound by a bottom machine, the parking ticket machine.
Parking meter.
Uh, parking meter, right, well, uh, still there, I, it's on the edge, I don't know if it's her property or if the village, 'cause on the edge, that's where the machine is, and, and when I go to, you know, when older people go to put money in, it's very hard for them to get over there. I'm talking to you, I've been out there.
Okay.
'Cause I don't want to slip, I, I don't want, you know, that was the village, or us, or this road to get involved in, it's, it's, I'm in the way, if you can, so they get to it.
By the bank?
No, it's right, it's right, it's one bank, right, out in the back, right there.
By that pay station, that's probably the bank.
Right, right. And, uh, 'cause I paid a guy to do it, do the little back there, I paid a guy, you know, this road, pay me back, so, uh, also, I.
Mark them, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Was this snow that was piled, as we cleaned, piled there?
No, no, we're definitely, uh, you know, nobody moved it, it's just out there.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, but, uh, uh, the lighting is terrible, even with our neon sign, at night, you can't even, you know, you, I mean, I don't know, I have been, I had to go get glasses, but.
We're, we're looking at a way.
Yeah.
To, to, had to realize that, you know.
Yeah, very dark.
Yeah, sometimes you have.
Even when the light goes on, you gotta, you know.
Or the white side is all lighting that is.
No, it's just, it's, it's always been dark.
Not at.
It's the lighting of the parking lot, I mean, they all have to, sure, every other parking lot has its own problem, at night, it's very dark, and you, and you used to have, now they have this new one, that really, you know, put a lot of light out. And also, on March twenty-first, we're gonna have a DJ, and we're gonna have models walking around, bathing, so.
Very good. I guess. You gonna have, you gonna have little tacos?
I, we're looking into something like that, looking to food or something.
Okay.
But we got a new, brand-new carpet, and, you know.
So Dad's gonna give him a job, like that.
Uh, I don't know, but he, he doesn't know anything about it, he knows, he's coming, but, you know, the world. Thank you.
Give him my, my bet.
Yeah.
You know, Joe, I also have heard people tell me that, that she's, the songs are very dark.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we were just talking about that the other day, too. Oh, okay. If you like the number, you can't see.
Yeah, I can't see what they're doing, yeah, yeah. Okay.
Put them on your smartphone.
All right.
I know most of you know me, but I'll introduce myself formally anyway, my name is Stephanie Veram, the general manager for Rose Coffee and Tea Trading Company, a board member for the Greater Patchogue Chamber of Commerce, and a resident of Patchogue. I'm here tonight because it has come to our attention that Starbucks has been asking about opening up a retail space here in the village, I'm here to publicly speak in front of the Board of Trustees to discuss my concerns, which I have until now only expressed privately with most of you. Rose Coffee and Tea Trading Company opened a little over four years ago in the village, just as the town started to pick up. It was my understanding that residents wanted a Starbucks before we opened, but the corporation said they were not interested because our demographics did not fit their criteria. They had no interest in our community when we were too small, but now that the mom-and-pop shops did all the heavy lifting for them, they're fine with coming in. In the last four years, this village has consistently turned around into a beautiful and unique town, complete with growing arts and music community. We created a safe and healthy environment for youth in Patchogue to express themselves creatively and spend their Friday nights at our old weekly open-much-time. We are a family-friendly establishment in town that has contributed to the building of this amazing community that we have right now. The owners and I have volunteered countless hours of our personal time to serve on the Board for the Patchogue Arts Council, for Patchogue Chamber of Commerce, and many committees within that. These organizations are responsible for many successful yearly events, such as the Live Up to Five, the Patchak Festival, and many others. We have supported and participated in all of them. A corporation like Starbucks would not contribute to any annual community events that the village is known for, and without local business participation, none of these events would be possible. The reason why we do that is because we believe in this community. I believe in this town and this village. I came to work here four years ago, and completely fell in love with the community and how much everyone supported each other. I moved into my apartment here two years ago, and now I'm looking to purchase a permanent residence here for me and my family. I believe in my village trustees and everything that you guys have done for this community since I've been here. And as a village trustee, you hold a position of trust and a level of responsibility towards the people who live and work here. You guys have all done a great job so far protecting our community from chains, and I hope you will continue against them, continue to fight against, um, them alongside us. In two thousand seven, the corporation closed about six hundred stores nationally, twenty-nine of those locations were in New York, with twelve of those being on Long Island. Around this time, Starbucks had a location in Greenport, right across the street from Aldo's Coffee Roaster, which has been open since nineteen eighty-seven. Four years later, the corporation decided they couldn't compete anymore and closed its doors. They left behind a huge empty store right on Main Street. The last thing this village needs is to go back to Main Street full of empty storefronts. They have a history of going up against neighborhood coffee roasters and not making it. There's nothing more gen, more generic and not special than a Starbucks on your Main Street. There are only a handful of coffee roasters on Long Island, our village is lucky enough to have one that calls Patchogue home. We are confident in our ability to compete against the coffee giant, but Patchogue is now coming into a place of really supporting a single coffee shop. In the case that Starbucks does not close their doors shortly after opening them, Patchogue might have to say goodbye to its local coffee roaster that has won festival and island titles every year for the four years it's been open, and all of our community involved that I spoke to earlier. We're at an important time in Patchogue's history right now. If we start letting in franchises and corporations like Starbucks, we might start a slippery slope to losing everything that people love about Patchogue and the magic that makes this town so special. Businesses like Rose will be at risk of losing everything we worked so hard for. The money spent in our shop stays in our community, let's keep the shops in town that know exactly how the mayor likes his hot chocolate, and exactly how Justin Laurie likes her cappuccinos and ceramics. We need to keep chains off of Main, so when Starbucks calls and expresses interest in our village, let's tell them that we have no interest in that.
Stephanie Wilson, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stephanie, can I take a copy so we can make sure? Yeah, definitely. Do you want a copy back? No, that's all right, thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Tiffany, yes.
Why am I calling? Why am I calling? Why am I calling?
Tiffany, yes. There were a damp, some music.
Okay. Sorry.
Uncommon public. Yes, sir.
Evening, thank you very much for hearing me. Unfortunately, it's a complaint.
Name and address, what is it?
Uh, William Lewis, uh, we live on Granville Avenue in Patchogue. Um, in April of two thousand fourteen, we made known to the, uh, the village that there were approximately half a dozen homes on West Avenue, south of Mulford Street and north of Laurel, with the majority of the sidewalks and driveways chewed up, holes in sidewalks. Uh, we also made known that, and that's on the west side, on the east side, of course, I'm sure we all know what the homes on West Avenue, on the east side, south of Mulford, uh, the roofs are falling off, it's an unsafe condition, some, it's unbelievable to me that nobody's been hurt in those homes yet. Um, we've seen people falling on sidewalks on the west side. Uh, the, our, our complaints have gone unanswered, uh, we put in four requests for updates, uh, last year, all of which went unanswered. Uh, in September, uh, Mr. Keys has been up to send me an email, saying that they hear our concerns, but, uh, the, uh, the fixing of the sidewalks might, uh, hurt them, hurt the people financially who own the homes. Um, I get that, we're, we're not, we're not unreasonable people, um, we've been here for six years, we, we, I've owned a place, I've lived, I've lived, I'm very proud of the way the village has turned around, as we all are. But the way that this portion of the block looks, which is a main thoroughfare, right through, uh, the people take the ferry to, visitors see this, that's the first impression they get a lot of times, uh, prospective residents see this area, and they, they look at the homes and they see the sidewalk, it looks unkempt, it's unsightly, it looks unsafe. And I think that not only, those people might be financially burdened, but I think it just aesthetically lowers the value of our, and our neighborhood. So I'm just asking that the viol, the codes that they're violating, in the near future, not the far future, just be looked at and enforced.
Well, just so you know, um, as you know, we're, we're receiving some, some funding for our parks, and part of that, that funding can go to sidewalks, to the parks themselves. We, we're also putting out a one point two million dollar bond to do sidewalks and roads. That, that was structured prior to the, the funding coming for the parks. The sidewalk money is that will be in that park's, will not be put into other places. So, Joe, we'll, we'll take a serious look at this, and take a look at that, and maybe move some of that, that, that funding down to that west side that you're talking about, do something with those. As far as those couple of homes, they, they had stacks of violations.
Yeah, nice.
You know, you can notice violation, you give them violations, either they pay, they don't pay, you put, you know, it is really, that, take a look at three oh seven Cedar Avenue, on the corner there, I mean, out of all the things that have happened in this village, that we've been able to, we've been able to move mountains to get stuff done, and I can't move, I can't move that guy to another town, you know, that's the mountain I would like to move. So those are the frustrations that we deal with just on this side, in terms of those kind of violations, but in terms of the sidewalks, that is stuff that we can take care of.
And, and, of course, you, you know I live right down the block.
Yeah, of course.
And, and I understand what, what the village has to go through to move that mountain, but it is so unsafe with the propane canisters, now that guard the man's front door, it, it's, like I said, it's amazing that the house hasn't blown up yet. So, like, so I'm just asking you, just, the, the few, the few complaints that we did make about those sidewalks, that they just be addressed as soon as possible.
Yeah, I think, I think sidewalks are the issue, the house is gonna be the toughest, but we'll work on it.
I live in Tucson, and Joe Miller's out there, she lives next door to me.
He's got a million cats.
He, he, the village, the village is doing everything in its legal power to do something about those properties, you know, that guy owns both of the buildings.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, you know, uh, our hands are, it's, when it comes to private property, uh, it's just so challenging, I mean, the, the corner of Cedar and, and Maiden Lane, that's a lot of cars. We've been in court for a decade.
He would rather pay a thousand dollar, he would rather, he'd have paid a thousand dollar.
Go to jail.
Or go to jail, than to put, put a thousand dollars into his house.
And fix his house, and it's his property.
It's beyond me.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Well, you're, you're in that business, too, you know the frustration, sometimes you can look at it, you, you wanna grab a hole, you just grab by the column and do something in it. You know.
Fortunately, nobody was hurt when that place up the street burnt down, now we got a nice vacant, now we get a nice vacant lot, so, it's for sale for eighty-five thousand